Okay, I think we're gonna go ahead. So thanks to you for joining in person and maybe online too, hopefully, I don't know. No, that's just me. I'm happy that you are here to talk about enhancing professional well-being with us. As we know, probably most of us, we got a mental health problem in academia. We have a significantly higher prevalence of hyper mental health issues among scholars, which has been confirmed for our field, for the field of media and communication scholars as well. Underlying factors, a lack of job security, publication pressure, pressure for grant acquisition, and non-healthy work-life balance. I don't think I have to tell you. But today, we're not gonna focus so much on the problem, but rather on possible ways ahead, on how solutions could look like. And we're gonna do so in a conversation with our distinguished speakers, four of which we've got here, and one online. Thanks for joining, Paul. And before I introduce them, hi, another attendee, hi. Yeah. And I know this is a topic that's close to many of our hearts. So whenever you want to join the discussion, please feel free to do so. I would hope this to be a conversation more than a just our speakers talking. Okay, so I'll briefly introduce our speakers in alphabetical order. And then we'll have time for a brief statement of each. So first of all, we got Thomas Harnich. He is professor of communication in the Department of Media and Communication at LMU Munich. And he is currently president-elect of the ICA. A former journalist, his research and teaching focus on journalism, cultures, mental health, and comparative methodology. Next, we got Daniela Hamiodent. She is senior researcher and teaching associate in the Department of Communication and Media Research at University of Zurich and currently our student and early career representative. Her research, and this might be interesting for our conversation as well, has explored algorithmic invisibility, minority representation, and inequality in digital platforms. Then we got Sister Agnes Lucy Lando. She is full professor of communication and media studies at Daystar University in Nairobi and director of graduate school. In 2016, she became the first African elected board member at large of ICA. And she is founding chair of ICA Kenya chapter. She co-invented, and that might also be very interesting, a system that is a thesis supervision. Might wanna share that with us? Okay, then we got Karin Valjorgensen. She is professor in the School of Journalism, Media, and Culture at Cardiff University, where she served as university dean of research, environment, and culture. Wow, quite the title. In that capacity, she led the development of Cardiff's Research Culture Action Plan and the first institutional research culture survey. And then online, Paul Wright. He is professor in the Communication Science Unit in the Media School at Indiana University Bloomington, where he's also director. His research focus is on media and effects in health communication, so an expert on health com. That's good. And he is editorial board member of Health Communication and has recently been appointed editor-in-chief of the annals of ICA. Okay, now that we know each other, I have forgotten to introduce myself. I'm Antonia Markowitz, and I will try to navigate us through this panel. So I would like to invite you to share your brief statements on the topic. Well, let's start with Paul, because he's so he feels included.
I do feel very much included, even though I'm in Indiana. I wish I could have been in Denver with everybody there. So first and foremost, my thanks to you, Antonia, and ICA for allowing us to have this important conversation. And of course, to my fellow panelists, who will have much more important and impactful thoughts and ideas than I will. So I'm glad I'm here to learn from them, just like everybody else. And I am reading prepared remarks, because Antonia told us to stay within three to five minutes. And the older I get and the longer my career goes on, I think that'll be no problem. And then the next thing you know, 15 minutes have gone by and I'm prattling on. So I'm gonna stick to the script. So the central question before us today is how can institutions contribute to enhancing communication scholars' well-being? And as it happens, I recently wrote an article published in Health Communication on just this subject. Unfortunately, the article's engagement to date has been very low, only 330 views and less than five social media mentions, so kind of an embarrassing performance so far. This could be because its arguments and suggestions are not very good, or it could be because we all have too much to read and do these days. And for my own mental health, I'm going to assume the latter. And since, given these metrics, it's highly unlikely that anybody in the audience today has read it, I'll use my three to five minutes to just provide a brief synopsis. So before summarizing my four suggestions, I want to note that the article was inspired by our ICA president's very important JOC paper, published in Parrish, Mental Health Among Communication and Media Scholars. Of course, I refer to the work of Thomas and his colleagues. And in particular, this statement from that article, quote, "We thus argue for the need to start a conversation about how to reduce the mental burden, especially for young and early career researchers." So when I wrote this article, my suggestions were primarily geared toward junior and mid-career scholars. But I do think they are applicable to many senior scholars, particularly at institutions that have implemented some sort of post-tenure review process. So first, I suggest that units similar to my own, and again, I'm kind of speaking about, admittedly, the United States and research-intensive institutions in the US. Although, again, I think the ideas probably have implications more broadly. And so, again, for units such as the one that I am in, my first suggestion was to value scholarship, teaching, and service as much as grant acquisition and tenure and promotion decisions and annual evaluations. If you read Thomas's article, the pressure to get grants is very prominently featured in the mental health struggles that communication scholars are facing. So there are a number of reasons I suggest this. But chief among these is that scholars' mental health flourishes when they are able to spend their time engaged in the activities that motivated us to become scholars in the first place. And for most of us, you know, these motivations had to do with research, teaching, and service, not sales or entrepreneurship. So grant funding should be seen as a means to a scholarly end only, rather than an end in and of itself. And I think kind of a shift back to this mindset would be a good thing for all of our mental health, and particularly the mental health of early and mid-career scholars. Second, I suggest that units similar to my own adopt a long-view perspective on early career productivity. So for example, I suggested that units consider significantly reducing historical expectations they had for publication productivity and article placement of tenure probationary faculty. So of course, tenure candidates should have to demonstrate their capacity as scholars. But I believe the emphasis on repeat publication performances is unnecessary and disastrous for early career scholars' mental health. You know, when we hire tenure-line faculty at institutions like mine, we expect them to be with us for their entire career. So I believe that if they have shown the capacity for scholarly excellence, even if only a few times, and they are sincere teachers and colleagues, I believe it is in the long-term interests of units such as mine to grant tenure. Third, I suggest that units similar to my own privilege internal over external review for tenure and promotion decisions. And this would reverse the current philosophy where external review is seen as most important to get at institutions like my own. So I have three primary reasons for this proposal. The first has to do with accuracy. I think that early and mid-career scholars' own colleagues are in a much better position to evaluate their worth and contributions than anybody else. And then the second and third have to do with mental health and ethics. So to quote the article, "It is not only stressful to toil away as a junior faculty member day in and day out, knowing that years down the line, senior colleagues whom they have never met will decide their professional fate." An argument could be made that it is also dehumanizing. And then fourth and finally, I suggest that we encourage agency and growth over, quote, "productivity" among mid-career scholars. And again, to quote the article for a final time, "I suggest that tenure should provide associate professors, mid-career scholars, with the freedom to pursue continued education, the latitude to reevaluate their research goals and foci, and the flexibility to make new collaborative and interdisciplinary connections. And it should also allow those who so choose to dedicate themselves more completely to teaching and service." So I believe this approach would be in the best interest of mid-career scholars' mental health and their current and future scholarly excellence. So these are just a few ideas, kind of structural. And I'm looking forward very much to the rest of our discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Sister Landa, would you like to continue?
Thank you, Antonia, for the opportunity. I'd like to, first of all, appreciate being in this panel and also to appreciate the trembling that I'm sharing the panel with the ICA president. But we were looking at his work from an academic point of view. So I'm glad to bring in some input from the African continent. One of the critiques that we pointed out, because he and colleagues had earlier on worked on a paper in 2024, which initiated an important process, which was providing the much-needed knowledge about the prevalence and scope of mental health issues within the field of communication. And the findings were good. But when we read it, one of the areas that we critiqued was the fact that the finding, the study, was predominantly Western. And so we wanted to broaden, myself and one of my graduate students, to broaden this conversation by offering an African perspective through an exploratory study that we did, by retesting his findings in the African context. So one of the things, the major finding was that, yes, the study that they did, which pointed out the mental health issues within communication scholarship in the West, is present in the continent of Africa, present in Kenya, that we could confirm. The reasons could be varied. One of the key areas is that in Kenya now, we have about 79 universities, public and private. But these 79 universities, especially the public universities, have a high number of students, hundreds of thousands of those students. But the number of professors in Kenya is about 1,000 only. So the ratio is very high. Therefore, you find that faculty stretched in terms of teaching, in terms of supervision, in terms of research. So that was one major finding that we had. And then also, some of the areas that we found which contribute to mental health issues on the communication scholarship and community is that this is present in both public and private universities. And you find that people in private universities would want to go and work in public universities because they think it is greener there in terms of permanent and pensionable. But the ones in public universities are admiring to come and work in private universities because they think the pay is good and is prestigious. So that is quietly happening in there. The other challenge is unrealistic institutional demands for work. You are faculty, you are expected to supervise X number of students. In principle, on the policy, it says about five to 10 students. But in reality, you have 30, 40, 50 students that you're supervising, masters and PhD. At the same time, you're supposed to be teaching full load. And at the same time, you're supposed to be doing research grants and publishing. So striking a balance is difficult and part of the cause of part of the cause of mental challenges there. There's an aspect of jealousy in terms of the academic staff and the administrative staff, academic and administrative. The academic think that they do all the work, they teach, they supervise, they mark, and they are underpaid, but the administrative staff are more paid. So that brings in a bit of tension. Then there's the aspect of job security whereby people feel, especially the ones who are on contractual, they're the ones who experience more mental challenges because you are on contract basis. You are not sure when you are going to be promoted, when you're going to be confirmed. And so when you have issues, you cannot raise them, because then you fear losing the job. However, Antonia has guided that we should not focus more on the problems. We should be looking for solutions. So as I go to the solutions, there was one aspect which was similar to the earlier study that we were referring to. The aspect of the mental challenges, the mental health issues that the faculty go through in the universities spill over to the families. Because when they go back home, then they are carrying the burden of the university back home, non-payment on time, overload of work. And also, we discovered that there are some employees, we worked both in the public and private university, who have not had annual leave for two, three years, because they are always carrying it forward. And as you carry it forward, you are also carrying on the challenges. So you find that even during vacation or during conferences or during Christmas holidays, the faculty are supposed to mark, because you have so many students, both undergraduate and postgraduate. You have to do theses, you have to do dissertations, you have to teach, you have to mark. So even working off working hours is still expected. So some of the areas that our study said that, how can organizations, now we're looking at the public and private institutions, how can we help to support the faculty? One of the challenges we saw was that the working hours, okay, it's eight to five. But sometimes the leadership can decide, oh, we have an Alice Senate meeting tomorrow at 5:30 in the morning. And so you come from wherever you are and go to that meeting. So this goes on. So we are saying that can we, can the organization support to adhere to the work policies that we have? Also, adhering to the HR promotional manual. Part of the stress that faculty go through is, although it is on the document that after X number of years and X number of publications, you can be promoted, that is still left to, is the prerogative of others, who will again decide at certain levels, used on rules that we are not aware of. Then employees are timid, people are not speaking up. So part of our studies is suggesting that can we talk? Can we speak when you feel you are being stressed or you are being frustrated, you are facing challenges? Maybe silence is not the best answer, because you persevere silently and you suffer silently. So we also thought that the fact of being mentally balanced, an individual also has a responsibility to play. So we're saying that there are things that an individual can do that is not necessarily in the hands of the institution. Like, for example, creating work-life balance. If I'm on vacation, I can simply text back and say I'm on vacation, or I put auto reply so that they know I'm not available. But we tend not to do that. For occupational stressors, we were suggesting in my study that we should learn to live office work in the office. And when you go home, you are at home, which is not easy, but we are recommending that. So maybe my final comment for now, as I wait for another chance to make more contribution, is that our study was proposing raising awareness. Because most of the colleagues that we interviewed, people are not even aware that they're having mental health issues with regard to the work that they're involved in. So we need to raise awareness through seminars, through workshops, talks on stress management, and just helping people to be who they are in terms of awareness of their responsibilities as employees of an institution. But at the same time, there are other roles as family people and individual members of the society. Thank you.
Would you go ahead, Thomas?
Oh, sure. Thank you. Sorry. So, okay, let me, thanks for coming to the session. Let me share a little story about mental health in academia and why I eventually run for president. Because there is an obvious connection to this. When we did the study that Sister Lando just referred to, when we started the study, and Antonia also was involved in it, we did the study in collaboration with international associations, scholarly associations. And we reached out to all of the bigger associations that exist in our scholarly discipline. So AGMC, yes. IMCR, yes, please. Akrea, yes, we even give you money. ALIKE, the Latin American Association, yes, we would love to participate. ICA, no. I was surprised. I was really surprised, because I always considered ICA as my intellectual home. And that was probably because of a specific constellation in the executive committee, that people seem to believe that if we would open up ICA's membership directory for people to survey them, that might create some sort of precedence. What they, I think what they missed was that this is not just one of the many topics we do research on. This is about us. This is a problem that we obviously have. And so I got very, very disappointed. So and then at some point, two years ago, the nominations committee of ICA approached me with the question of if I were to consider or willing to run for ICA president, if that would be something. And I was, I said, no, of course, because I said, this is not my home association any longer. And Patricia Moy, past president, she was the chair of the nominations committee. She, at the time, she said, well, Thomas, I respect that, but you know, I've been listening to you ranting about ICA and, you know, being disappointed. So now that you actually have a chance to do something, to change things, you cannot say no. And that turned it around. And so this is how I came here. So as a little precursor, so now talking to the issue, I would like to start with citing an email that I received in December 2021 from a colleague. I would not mention their name. I just, you know, read an anonymized version of the email that I received, only a part of it. So, quote, "Since my PhD student days, I consciously made a list of senior academics with expertise within my different areas of interest, whom I could emulate and use as inspirational figures, role models." Then there came a list of nine names. I was one of those. "One common thing across these nine senior academics that also inspired me was the mind-blowing pace at which you all publish. There is hardly a month that goes by without reading a new article or book from people on that list. In addition to that, these nine people were basically everywhere, from policy briefings to coordinating international research projects, to presenting keynote addresses, to serving in all kinds of assessment panels. So naturally, after my PhD, I thought, now is the time to start drawing concrete inspiration from these nine people. Then we had our first child shortly after my PhD. And five years later, we had our second child, who was born extremely premature. By the time we went home and I resumed work, I was mentally exhausted and in some ways professionally disoriented. In the midst of all these, I started wondering, do these nine people I have often looked up to have families? How can they be this productive if they have families? Is there a secret to balancing all these that they have and which I'm not, which I'm yet to figure out?" Unquote. When I got this message, I was really moved. I know this colleague personally very well. And I struggled with my response. So what could I tell? Taking a little bit, going a little bit, moving back from the email, I think it shows two things. It shows a lot more, but I can mention only two. One, I think we need to see that the objective conditions vary between individuals. So I believe that our current meritocratic system, the way we judge or we look at achievement and excellence and success is decontextualized. We evaluate performance as if people were equipped with similar levels of privilege, and we know they're not. So just take me as an example. I'm a white cis male working for a rich university in the West. I have access to all kinds of resources. Versus a single-parent mom of two little kids working in precarious employment in a small, less wealthy university in Kenya, for instance, or another place with less equipped with resources, with a high teaching load, administrative demands, blah, blah, blah. How can this person reasonably compare or compare with me? So is that competition fair? No, it's not. It is unfair, because we just look at people's records. We do not take into consideration where they come from. And the frustration that comes out of it has mental fallout. So what we need to do is we need to create a system in which context matters and in our evaluation processes. And this is in our hands. So and it's often been said in these contexts, we are the community. So we have leverage, especially senior scholars. My second take from that email is, and that follows from the first, "We often, or scholars, often have simply unrealistic expectations on themselves. We compare ourselves to a few big stars on the firmament of in this research environment without considering the contextualities of their success. Do we know how these people work, under which conditions, which universities? How much flexibility and time do they have for research? So this is all not considered. So what we need to do as individuals is to find some sort of a healthy way to calibrate our expectations to a level that is practical and in line with the objective conditions of our professional and personal existence." And so that's for the moment, my introductory remarks. And I have a lot more to say along this, but I don't want to take too much time. Thank you.
Is it on? Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yeah, it's working.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for the invitation to be part of this panel. This is not my field of research, so I will talk from my personal and lived experience. I will also talk from my conversations with other students and early-career scholars in the past few months since being invited, but also in the past few days as the world falls upon us. And of course, throughout my short academic career. So first, you know, listening to you, I brought some reflection about my identity, right? I think, thinking of our, so importantly, I will bring you some very practical and very simple approaches that I have followed and then my context follows, rather than more maybe data-based information. So I think that our identity as a scholar sometimes can be very limiting, because we value ourselves through our scholarship. This is very hard in a context where job markets are so bad, where the published or perish culture has exploded, and where there is a hierarchy of methods, of theories, and of approaches that renders some people less employable than others. So I will talk a little bit about who I am as a person beyond my scholarship, to show you a little bit of how I reflect on the value that I may have in my trajectory and also in my presence in academia. Because I think if we pull from other identity traits that we have, we can bring some kindness, some joy to academic contexts. So besides being an academic, as a human, I am a woman, I am an Ecuadorian. I am 41 years old, so I am an old early-career scholar. I have lived in many countries. I'm a professional migrant. Besides studying migration, I have been undocumented in the US for four years and while doing my research in Spain for one year. I am a creative and musical. I am a wife. I am a mother of two girls. And they were already in my life when I was doing my PhD. I aim to be kind to others always, and I am resilient and I'm grateful. But I would like not to need resilience anymore. As an academic, I'm an educator, I'm a mentor in training, I am a qualitative researcher. My research has a three-fold focus. I study social media influencers and content creators, AI and creativity, and I am a recovering migration researcher. Now, I have found that regardless of our precarity or non-permanence in academia, there are everyday forms of agency and power that we can deploy to enhance well-being. And I will talk about my key approach. And this is a crowdsourced approach that I have discussed with my colleagues at my level. I call this approach intentional kindness. So academic culture calls for a constant improvement of our work. The idea that perfection is something that exists. The peer review process is at the center of our academic lives. We go through it for journal articles, tenure reviews, grant proposals. In many journals, in academic conferences, we have seen this note that has come out now, very recently. I think maybe for the past few years, that calls for reviewers to consider the potential of harm. Be careful with what you say. On the other side of this review, there may be an early-career scholar, and there's a person that will read this review. On the other side of this review, there may be an early-career scholar, and there's a person that will read this review. This note comes in response to a culture in academia that has been, become increasingly harmful. It reflects a trend in our culture as academics. This is why I think kindness can not only be unintentional, but we need to be intentionally kind. Some examples of this, I have been the lucky recipient of intentional kindness, and this is why I'm promoted. Some examples of this for me include sending an email to the author of a paper we found really useful or insightful. It may mean asking a colleague how they are and actually waiting to hear the answer. It may also mean normalizing academic failure and telling a story of rejection to scholars who may have not experienced success yet. And of course, celebrating the small successes of academic life. Being kind to others may seem obvious, I hope it does, but also generous. And it is, but in my experience and conversations with others, intentional kindness often translates into kindness with ourselves. And I think this is key in our personal well-being. When we're going through academic failure, we can avoid that harsh R and R. We can leave it to the side until we feel like we want to read it. We can leave toxic environments. We can avoid the phone call or meeting that we, that we think is going to harm us. But we have to live with ourselves and we live in our minds. So our inner voice is one of the more powerful tools to increase our well-being beyond our professional life, right? So we should make our mind a kind, inviting, beautiful place to be. And I think that being intentionally kind to others tricks our mind into being kind to ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. And it's so lovely to hear all these reflections from colleagues. And I'm very aware that I'm coming last in a range of such insightful and I think quite moving reflections, actually. So I was so pleased to see the idea of this panel on the well-being of academics in the field. As a researcher, I've had a very longstanding interest of well-being in the context of my research and the role of emotion in journalistic practice. But questions more broadly around well-being amongst academics is something that I've had quite a lot of opportunities to work on in the context of having held a very senior leadership role in my institution. So over the last five years, in addition to my day job of being a professor in journalism studies, I've worked as what we call a university dean of research environment and culture. So that title is quite a handful. But in that role, basically, my job has been to work to create a more positive research culture for all colleagues involved in research across all career paths and stages and across the whole institution, which is a very large, research-intensive institution in the UK. So that roughly translates into trying to think about what I could make or what I could do to make lives better for colleagues involved in research. So in order to understand what the priorities were for colleagues across the institution and across all disciplines, when I took on this role in 2021, I carried out a survey of colleagues' experiences of their research environment and their views on what would actually make it better. And the survey covered a range of different areas, including mental health and well-being, the freedom to be curious and creative, as well as job security and career development. It was completed by more than a third of all faculty, in addition to colleagues in other roles who identified themselves as being involved in research. And in developing our survey measures, we drew on ones already carried out at other institutions so that we were able to benchmark with what was happening elsewhere in the sector. And what we found at Cardiff was really quite striking, but it was also similar to what came up at other institutions. Because the overwhelming sense we got from the data was that colleagues feel that their immediate environment is quite collaborative, it's quite supportive. People feel that curiosity and creativity are supported in their immediate environment. At the same time, we also got a very strong sense from the data that colleagues experience increasing pressures on their time with ever-increasing workloads, particularly associated with teaching and administration. So only less than a third of all those that we surveyed felt they have enough time to actually do their research. So somewhat similar to what Sister Agnes was talking about. And this is something that appears to have a very negative impact on colleagues' mental health and well-being, on their creativity and their ability to develop new ideas. And it's something that appears to be only accelerating. It's also something that seems to more significantly affect women, those with caring responsibilities, colleagues from minoritized communities, and colleagues with disabilities. And this is something that is occurring within a context where high education institutions in the UK, like elsewhere, are quite squeezed financially. So the feeling of being pressed for time is something that is combined with a sense of growing precarity. Now, I wrote a piece with my colleague at Newcastle University, who's also dean of research culture at a research-intensive institution, where we tried to write about our very similar findings around these experiences with time pressures. We borrowed from a concept developed in the sociology of work, referred to as time poverty, which calls attention to the essential importance of time as a resource. And basically, time poverty has been defined as people feeling like they have too many things to do and not enough time to do them. And evidence links the experience of time poverty to lower well-being, physical health, and productivity. Now, on the basis of the findings of our survey, what we did at my institution was to prioritize protecting time for research. That's not necessarily affixed to the more structural problems identified, but it is something that is within the control of institutions and of individuals within them. So how do you do that? Well, what we did at my institution was that we created a university-wide sabbatical or research leave scheme, where previously that had been left to the decision of individual schools and departments. We also ensured meetings-free days and organized university and school-funded research and writing retreats. Structurally, what we're doing is to carry out a larger project to see how we can reduce bureaucracy and complexity of processes and procedures around everything from finance to teaching. And then also, more importantly, and I think this has been hinted at already, we have reviewed our promotions procedures to work on actually making visible what have previously been invisible forms of labor, including things like support and mentoring for colleagues, actively rewarding that kind of labor. But ultimately, I think that we do need some more systemic and sector-wide and international approaches and a wide range of different solutions that look at these patterns of reward and recognition and go beyond simply rewarding this kind of hyper-productivity to actually thinking about rewarding what it is that makes academia a good and supportive environment to work in. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. So we have, we have brought different layers of the problem on the systemic part, on the organizational level, and quite a bit on the individual level, on personal, individual resilience, which is important, of course, but individual resilience does not make us overcome systemic problems. So how do you think we can institutionalize the factor of care, caring for each other, empowering each other on a more systemic organizational level?
Okay. So. Thank you, Antonia. I could respond to that, and I want to combine what Thomas said with our colleague there. Thomas talked about the context. But if we want to look at this particular issue, we look at the context. So I'd like to refer to that and also to the aspect of publish or perish as I come to how can we solve that particular problem. So in Kenya, in particular, but also Africa in general, it is the other way around. It is publish and perish. Yeah, you publish and perish. So whereas the studies have shown that there is this mental health issues among academics, it is difficult for us from the global south when we start talking about double-blind peer review. That's why the context comes in. You see, it is one statement and a blanket for all. We are coming from different contexts. Now, in our context, for a doctoral student to graduate, you must publish in a peer-reviewed journal. Where you find that is a story for another day. But getting, if you, if you get to these journals, like for example, the ones we have in ICA or the ones we have in other places, the reputable ones, getting beyond the reviewers is also another issue. And as one of our interviewees indicated, and I quote, said, "Those who make submissions to higher-impact journals rarely go past the reviewers and editors for flimsy reasons such as," direct quotation, "we receive a high number of submissions." So now US is rejected because we receive a high number of submissions. Or the English language is not well-written without considering that English is not our first language, like our colleagues from the global north. So that pressure is so real because you have to progress as an early-career scholar. You have to move to the next level. You need to publish. You have to graduate as a PhD student, but before that you need to publish. So what happens? You go to predatory journals. You pay $5, $10, and get published. Now, when you present that publication for your graduation or for your promotion, it is rejected by the university. That's why I'm saying you publish and perish. So now, the solution. My proposal would be, without necessarily lowering the standards of the peer-reviewed journals, could we have a way in which reviewing these particular articles could consider where these publications are coming from? Because it's like, if I ask somebody to publish in Kiswaii, for example, we shall reject it because it is poorly written in Kiswaii, which is the national language for Ken. So I'm advocating for that. Is there a way in which we can, we can stagger the criteria for, for accepting or for rejecting those particular articles just based on where they're coming from? Number two, we have tried, and I really want to thank ICA. For us in the global south, we have greatly benefited from ICA. ICA scholars, ICA fellows, those who have published, they are always willing to lend a hand when we approach them. We have approached a number, and even during these conferences, they've been coming to our sessions and talking to the graduate students, talking to the early-career scholars, and helping to direct and giving guidance. So those would be my two for now. Thank you. And that was the end.
Yeah, we got someone. Yeah, please go to the microphone. Yeah.
Hi, my name is Rita Araújo, and I come from Portugal. And I just wanted to add, I don't know if we can like overpass what, what you are saying, but one way of making the decision like more equal and of balance balancing, like the language, the language part, would be for the editorial boards to be even more diverse. Because most of the times they aren't. And even me, I come from a Western country. I come from Europe, but I'm not from a very big university or a very rich university. And so I also struggle with that and often receive comments like, "You should justify why you are studying the Portuguese context." And I don't feel like I have to justify why, why I should be studying the Portuguese context because I'm, I'm Portuguese, and I feel it's a relevant context that we should be studying because it's often under, under-researched. So maybe if we had more diverse editorial boards that included people from other geographies, from other contexts, we could balance these things out.
Thank you.
Can I take this one? Yeah. Thanks for bringing this up. And this comes up all the time to talk about it. Even this morning, when we had the orientation session that ICA typically provides at ICA for ICA newcomers, so to speak, we got the same question from a colleague from Africa. And, and so the problem is, we do see the problem. And I do think that journalists have become much more considerate over time. And I started my career 25 years ago. It looked very different. I always had to defend my choice of country, while my American colleagues would never done, did not do that. Or there was no need for them to do that. So, and so editors and reviewers have become much more attuned to the global aspect of doing communication, communication research. But the problem still is there. So I do see value to keep this on the radar and discuss it over and over again because that is recurring. So, but I do, but I have a lot of hope. If I look at the development of editorial boards of Journal of Communication, for instance, if I look at it from, say, 40 years ago, it was all-American. So, and you know, maybe 20 years ago, 15 years ago, it was kind of all-American plus Europeans. And now you have quite a bit, not enough, but you have some representation of the global south in the editorial board. So we are on a good track, but we're not yet there. So that's my take on this. Does anyone else want to respond to this question?
Yeah. Would you mind coming to the microphone? Thank you.
I'm sorry, I want to return to something. I think the gentleman on Zoom said about prioritizing internal review over external review. Was that you, Michael? Okay, cool. So I'm Judith. I'm an associate dean at the University of Maine of Faculty Development. So this is really relevant to me. We, at UMaine, we actually have an internal review that counts almost as much as the external review. We are very careful about the tenure and promotion process. It's one of the, I've been at other institutions, one of the most kind processes I've ever seen. Like, we want you to get tenure. How can we help you? We still have academics with major mental health issues. And so I'm wondering, as an academic myself, and I'm hoping y'all can speak to this, like, to what extent are we our own worst enemies? Like, we feel, and I'm being, I walk around here at ICA, and I'm feeling like I'm a fraud, right? I'm not good enough. What am I doing here? And not to turn this into like a personal counseling session, but I cannot possibly be the only one. So aside from, even if we flip the review process, what can we do to get academics to stop hating on ourselves so much? I guess is what I'm saying.
Yeah, thank you. Carrie? I mean, I, I think this is a really, really important question to ask because I think that academia is full of overachievers who, who function on the basis of a fundamental level of anxiety, which is a product of permanent imposter syndrome. Yes, and, and I mean, I think that, that part of, part of the reason for that is, well, it's in part because our identities are so closely tied to our work, which is, I think, in itself problematic, as you were, you were talking about as well. But I also think that this emphasis on productivity and certain markers of success does generate further anxiety, the ways in which we are constantly measured through some very exacting criteria. And I think that one of the solutions is to, first of all, be extremely supportive of colleagues, especially junior colleagues. Secondly, own up to the fact that we all suffer from imposter syndrome, and that is a structural issue in academia. And then I think, thirdly, it is, it is also really important for colleagues at all career stages to model sort of sane and healthy behavior that is protective of mental health and to openly talk about our failures, our anxieties, our challenges with juggling varied responsibilities and the fact that we are all indeed human beings. So I, I think we can't deny that these are structural issues. I think it would be very difficult to actually address them, certainly not something we do very quickly, but at least we can own up to it and talk about it.
Paul, you wanted to add to that?
Oh, well, the two thoughts. So first, everything that everybody else has said, for sure. And then, second, what came to my mind was really think about who you, A, hire as peers and colleagues, and then B, who you put into administration. Because in my experience, it's kind of the, you know, in my experience, it's kind of the, you know, it's your colleagues' approach to all of these issues. Do they operate in that kind of kindness ethos that was described so beautifully earlier? Do they have a wider perspective on what it means to be a human and a member of the society that you're in and the world at large? And how seriously do they take themselves? I mean, all of these things, because here at IU, I've been very fortunate, you know, in the Department of Telecommunications to have all of these things. And I'm going to talk very briefly about distinguished Emeritus Professor Annie Lang, who everybody knows, right? I was terrified of Annie when I interviewed here and when I first got hired because, you know, she's a one of a kind intellect. There's no way for sure me and most of us could ever, you know, emulate what she's done. And she was the perfect kind of archetype of somebody who for herself was so driven, you know, and so motivated and so accomplished and so able. And then and then really didn't apply any of those same, you know, criteria to her colleagues, just the, you know, the kind and welcoming and wonderful and and it was, so it just modeled for me like, yeah, our system should allow those who are inclined towards. I mean, I'm a bit of a workaholic. I love to work. It's it's my passion. I feel like I should be allowed to do that. But not everybody should have to do that. And and the the environment at IU, again, because of who we've had in administration and who we've hired kind of lets everybody be themselves, you know? And if I want to spend my free time working, I can, and that's okay. And if other people don't want to, they can, and that's okay. So somehow we've been able to create that here. And again, I think it's because when we interview, you know, we're just very, very attentive to kind of those elements of the people that we hire. So those are some other thoughts that came to mind.
Thank you. Yes, Daniela first and Thomas, please.
Okay. So I would say that academia and conferences really bring this out in us is very performative. So if we sit at the lobby of this conference today, if you just sit and observe people passing the way in which we we behave in this conference is really interesting, as you know, as I'm proposing, I think as an ethnography, it is useful as just observing how we perform our academic selves, how we try to look professional and where we think an academic should be. And I think this is very interesting because as a global south native, we behave differently in our professional environments. We we mix a little bit of personal with professional. And academia doesn't do that that much, right? As academics, we perform. So I think authenticity is important, being ourselves, I think, was mentioned before. But also normalizing other norms of what an academic can also be, right? And this is done, I think, through conversations. I think the way we talk about academia and our professional lives is important. But also by by normalizing, and this is not an academic problem, I think this is a social, at the level of societal level, we have an issue with mental health as a taboo. We see mental health issues as a weakness. And I would argue that people who have overcome struggles in general in life, but specifically mental health struggles, are some of the stronger strongest people you can find. And in academia and in society, we're really missing an opportunity of learning from them by making this from us, as I may say, not from them, from us. Because we make it a taboo, we make it not okay to be to have a mental health issue. This is a taboo word to use. We don't even use it, right? So I think institutions and academic communities need to become more comfortable with the discomfort of discussing mental health and calling it by its name.
Thank you.
Right, I can pick up on this perfectly. So this is also something that I had on my list. It's wonderful to have safe spaces for people to speak up about their own experiences. So I, for instance, I've become interested in the topic because I had my own experiences. So I've been one of those who've been affected by mental health crisis as part of the pandemic, for instance. And so and that got me into this field. And when we presented this research for the first time in I C A, we had a couple of people on the panel and almost everyone was making full disclosure. And that opened up an interesting space. There were other people in the room standing up saying, "Me too." So I was also affected and people really appreciated this space where they can actually talk about it and realize I'm one of many. So it happened to many people of all kinds of different academic hierarchies. This is one thing. The other thing is about speaking about perception and behavior. And that's that's an interesting topic in and by itself. When it comes to imposter, yeah, we have in our survey, and we didn't publish on that, it's appeared, we did found a lot of find a lot of evidence of impostor syndrome among the respondents of our survey. So we are, many of us are clearly labeled impostors by the typical psychological standards. Second, we need to bear in mind that, I mean, we all use social media. Almost everyone is using social media. And especially in the work-related context. So we would typically, you know, talk or tout our successes. We would talk about all the good things that happen in our lives, all the paper awards, the articles, articles published, this and this and that. So all our successes are put on social media. How many of us are talking about their failures? That rarely happens. So when people read this, they get the warped impression of other people's performance. And this is a distorted comparison on which we often base our own social competitive evaluation. So we need to be aware of that. When we did the survey, we asked people a question whether or not they have the feeling that based on what they get to see on social media, are other scholars more successful than they are? And two thirds of the respondents said, yes, that's the case, at least for me. And that's mathematically impossible, right? So there is a biased perception. That's one thing. The second thing is behavior, and we talked about this already. I'm always saying that we as senior scholars, I mean, all almost everyone here on the podium, you kind of see my senior. And we have a responsibility. And I would call it mindful mentoring. So we oftentimes as scholars, without actually realizing it, we celebrate a kind of academic culture of constantly working. And and then we should not be surprised if our younger colleagues perpetuate such toxic culture. We found that evidence in our survey. For instance, seventy seven percent of the people we interviewed said they worked during weekends and vacation. Seventy two worked harder than most others in the field. Again, how is that any possible? Sixty six, sixty six percent said they would prioritize work over family, friends and leisure activities. That's toxic. But this is something that they learn from us. So I think we as senior academics should be cognizant of the fact that we are often seen as role models, even in situations or when we feel we don't deserve that role. And that is just another thing that we can actually do very easily to become more aware of how we are seen by our younger colleagues. And that's probably something that doesn't involve organizational change. It's just behavioral change that we can start by ourselves very easily.
Yeah, so when Daniela has been talking and Thomas has spoken, something is burning in me and I'm saying, I think I want to continue the I C A theme for this year for disruption. And I'm saying, based on the fact that we are imposters in a way because of what we have discussed. And back in our institutions, we are running to 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 teach and to supervise and to do research. We come to I C A conference. We are also running to present papers. You meet a friend you've not met for three years. Wait, wait, I'm running to present a paper. I'm going to listen to that paper. Could it be that the stresses that we come with from our respective countries and institutions, we continue them during the conference? And after the conference, is there possibility that we leave sometimes more mentally stressed than we can? So then, the disruption is this, the proposal. Could we could we have a session during the conference days at I C A where we have a relaxed, maybe three, four hours in a day, where scholars vent, we go to debrief, we talk about our successes, we talk about our failures. If I hear Thomas submitted an article and it was rejected, I'd be encouraged. I'd be like, oh, so it can happen to him as well because here we are all stars. But inside, we are going through a lot. So probably now that as you take the mantle, could you check whether it is possible that in the forthcoming I C A conferences, we have a session where junior, senior distinguished scholars, we are all meeting and how did you make it? Where did you come? What have you come with to the conference? How are you feeling? And how can we overcome? So I'm thinking that probably apart from coming to continue the busy schedules that we have had back home here, can we have also a moment for scholars to debrief, to vent, to grow, to fly back lighter than we can? Thank you.
Let me take this. Let me take this immediately. One, the planner of the next conference is sitting right in the room. So and second, since now two, no, three days ago, I C A has a new standing committee. It's called Transformational Professional Growth. It's going to focus on professional development and mental wellbeing and all these kinds of things. Now I C A has that. It didn't have it before. I was wondering why. So but now we have it and we will have a group of very capable people to think about potential ways in which we can leverage the association to have exactly the kind of thing that you suggested. And the kind of session and panels you suggested, we already have in our on our list of ideas because what we are planning with this new committee and with the future conferences is to have a regular track in I C A conferences where we can highlight professional development, mental wellbeing and all these kinds of things on different levels. So on the one hand, like, you know, having sessions where we can reflect on it, other sessions that are more instructive and so where you can learn something about how to deal with difficult situation during your professional lives. So yes, it's already on the radar and Ingrid will have to implement it.
So I have a session proposal for this. So I had a wonderful, one of the best sessions I've ever had, I would say, during COVID at Accra, at Accra Summer School. They did this session that was with senior scholars who talked about aspects, things that they did not understand. So for instance, books that they read and they don't understand, theories that they did not understand. And I thought this was brilliant because when you're starting, I remember, I remember giving, they would ask us as early as PhD students to say what we didn't understand. And most people chose really difficult texts, burdo and foco, of course, even the things are only the difficult things. But we all go through moments where we don't understand things we should maybe. But in my case, I didn't, when I started my work, I didn't understand what epistemology was or ontology. So I actually had some notes where where I put the meaning of these words. So when someone asked me, I could answer because I could, I don't, not only I didn't understand, but I would forget what they are. So I had these notes and during COVID on conferences, I would have them just in case. So during this event, I said that. And then people, no one said anything, but in the private messages, they're like, can you send me this list? So I think this is powerful to, and the more senior, the better. Scholars would say, this is what I don't understand. So, yeah.
Thank you. We got one in the audience? Yes, please. And yes, it's such a soothing experience to hear that, no, not everyone can do everything all at once.
Yeah. I just wanted to make a comment on how we should frame the issue of hyperproductivity and and all of these mental health struggles as a problem of sustainability within our fields. Because I think it's necessary to also have intergenerational debates about this. I'm seeing like the audience here and our panelists, and I think that there's like, there's an absence of people that are like younger and there's also an absence of people that are like older. But it's not just that. I actually believe that there are some tensions regarding how we should be conducting our careers and the level of overdemanding that we should have over ourselves. And there are like very marked differences from people that are like around their early thirties and people that are in their forties or most of them. And that's not like a very big gap. And we really need to have, sorry, we need to have these conversations because I think the younger generations, I'm talking about people that are twenty five or even also early thirties, are considering escaping academia because they know it's demanding. And while we can make like jokes about it because that's our way to overcome it, they know that this is not a joke. And that differences of tone can actually make people be very, they have negative reactions towards having these conversations with us because they know that, or they think we're not taking them seriously. But they actually have a point. Actually, I discussed it with my therapist because she told me that when I made jokes about my mental health, it was like a way of escaping of the seriousness of the issue. And that's how I realized that maybe stand up comedy was not a solution. But yeah, I think it's important to have that that frame. But it's also, but a point in favor to our field is like, well, for many, the escape of academia is to actually become journalists again, and that's not that good idea. But we we need to start thinking about how not to have like a brain drain in the future generations or in the present.
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, Carrie.
I mean, I was just gonna respond directly to that and then follow up with another, oh, is it turned on? Can you can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I was just gonna, first of all, respond directly to that and then have a very specific suggestion to follow on from your suggestion, which I absolutely loved. So I would say from my experience, talking to so many colleagues at all career stages and also ages across my institution, what's very clear is that there is exactly that generational difference that you described, where younger generations of scholars find academia quite an unappealing career path because of precarity, because of the pressures and because of the culture that they perceive as being difficult to work in. I think on the one hand, we can kind of be very sad that academia is now not a very appealing profession to go into. On the other hand, I think what younger colleagues are doing is to push us to actually talk about mental health, talk about how to create a more positive research culture and to think about how we can actually challenge ourselves to make the environment better. So I do sometimes feel quite sad when my best PhD students want to go off and work for a polling company or for for government instead of continuing in academia. But then at the same time, I think actually they are naming the things that we have previously left unspoken, and that is extremely important. In the spirit of very specific suggestions, my son is a high school student. And in his high school, they have a wall of rejection where people put in anonymized format every single rejection that they get, whether it's for university or for some kind of fellowship program or summer camp. So there's this huge wall, which is all rejection. And then there's there's a saying saying rejection is not failure, it is growth. And I often think about this when I go and visit academic departments, which have walls of productivity or they have posters with all the publications. I think every department right next to that should have a wall of rejection and that would that would normalize, that would normalize that experience of being rejected, being rejected, which is so essential to academia. So that's my one specific suggestion.
Thank you. So we need an I C A wall of reflection now. So we got five more minutes. In the case of being in the spirit of being in time, does any one of you have any final remarks on that topic you wanted to share?
Paul?
Paul? No? Okay. Okay, go ahead, Thomas. I'm sorry. Yes, please. Just, yes.
Thank you for this session. I'm very productive. I have a very specific question because it's about solutions, right? I suffer from something which is not institutional. I don't, my institution is amazing. I have all the support. It's the personal stress that I put on myself. And I've been in very specific situations. I had physical health issues that were also difficult on me mentally. And I was also had to deal with PTSD because I was born during the war and I witnessed wars and my family from Lebanon. This was right before the I C A deadline. And I was struggling. I mean, I couldn't sleep because I just, I mean, they would tell me about bombs. And of course, I had to ask them every minute, are you alive? And because that reminded me of the bombs that I could still hear and feel when I was about eight to 10 years old. All of this, I had two papers I was working on and I had to decide what to do. In a very shameful moment, I decided to make one paper an abstract, the extended abstract, and but I still finished one paper and I submitted it. That one actually got rejected, but my That one actually got rejected, but my abstract got accepted, so I'm presenting it here. My whole question is, and I don't need publications, I'm mid-career. It's just, I don't know how to stop when this is the situation. And like this was, and I'm being very specific because it was a very specific situation that happened that is also related to ICA. So any specific feedback you can give me or, you know, pointers on when to just kind of say, no, you don't need it, just don't do it. So thank you.
Well, that's, that's a, I mean, that is a kind of experience that many of us make, right? So you have these wonderful ideas for papers and you really want to submit it to ICA and then you, you know, you feel like you just can and it is painful. But what I, what I learned, and that was also very painstaking, I learned, I need to look at what makes me feel better. So does it make me feel better to, you know, to crank out this paper despite the condition under which I do it? Or I just, you know, I just decide for myself, it's just not worth it. And there's more ICA conferences, there will be more opportunities and better take care for myself. So that is my, my, my personal response. But well, the other would be, if, if that is something that's recurrence, I would definitely go to seek help from, from people who can actually be helpful to you. Because I mean, you talked, you spoke about PTSD, this is just not going to go away. So that would be just the other advice that we noticed from our survey is that academics find it also very difficult to seek help despite they know all these processes and they know how valuable it is to have an expert to talk to. But yet it's a stigma, as Daniela said. So the help-seeking aspect is also very important to be socialized in a way that it doesn't make you feel weak if you go out to a psychotherapist, for instance.
Thank you. All right, so we're running out of time. Thank you for joining the session. Thank you for speaking. Thank you for being here, Paul, to you too. Thanks. Thank you.